بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته أولاً، دعنا نعذبنا للتو هذه هي أول مرة لدينا فيها جميعاً في هذا الغرفة نحافظ على خطط التزامنا الاجتماعي لذلك اضطرنا لوقت قليل فقط للتأكد من أن كل شيء يعمل ونعمل بشكل جيد لذا، مرحباً هذا هو أول اجتماع عالمي ثالث وأول اجتماع عالمي virtual الحمد لله وهذه هي الأوقات ونحن نريد التأكد من أننا نقوم بالعمل كما هو الحال عادة ونقوم بالعمل، وننظر إلى كل هذه الأبعاد ونقدم لكم هذه الإعلانات الشهرية، ونتركها لا ت错过 مع ذلك، سأشارك في اليوم الهدف اليوم هو أننا سنبدأ بالاستفادة من قرآن ثم سننظر إلى هدف هذا اجتماع عالمي ونقدم لكم بعض الإعلانات من خلال الشهر الماضي ونتحدث عن بعض التمويلات، التي مهمة جداً وننظر إلى خطة رمضان ثم نقوم ب閉门 وهو مهم جداً مع ذلك، سنذهب إلى استفادة من القرآن ثم سنعود ونبدأ بالهدف من هذا الاجتماع مرحباً بكم بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم قبل أن أتحدث عن هدف هذا الاجتماع أريد أن أقدم لكم بسرعة إخباري لجميع أعضاء مجلس الإدارة الذين يجلسون معي، ونضعهم بعيداً عن سبع متر الآن، إذا كان بإمكاني رؤية، يمكنني أن أشير إلى الكاميرا لدينا أختي أشير، مسؤولينا معي، لدينا أختي رياض جادري، الذي هو مسؤولينا إذا كان بإمكاني أن أرفع يديك، أشير، أختي أشار أختي رياض معي، لدينا أختي بلال، أبو بلال هو جزء من مدرسة IT والتعليم، وهو معاون للكشف ثم لدينا أختي ياهيا أختي ياهيا ي負責 مساحات التواصل الاجتماعي، المديسة الطبية الأيبيك، وكل المدارس ثم معي، لدينا أختنا سمير سديكي، الذي هو رئيس الديانة وهو أيضًا ي負責 مساعدهم，并 وظائف التدريب ثم أختي بسير، الذي يجلس أمامي هو ي負責 كل شيء في المسجد هو معاون المراكز، مساعدة الأطفال، مساعدة بناء وهناك الكثير من الأشياء التي يفعلها على أساس يومي أعلم أنني أتحدث عن كل منهم لنبدأ بالهدف وهذه هي الفيديو التي شاركت بها في الثلاثة اجتماعات العالمية الماضية كما تعلمون، مجلس الأيبيك، لقد جمعنا هذا هو مجلس الأيبيك الثامن ونأتي في 19 فبراير لقد تم إعجابنا بهما في 19 فبراير منذ البداية في فبراير، كان لدينا اجتماع عالمي في كل شهر هذا هو اجتماع عالمي الثالث، وأول اجتماع عالمي virtual الهدف، الهدف الأول هو الحصول على تأكيد على أساس الشهر فيما بعد، كل شخص مهم، جميع المجتمع نريد أن نسمع منكم، نريد أن نستمع إليكم لذا، تأكيد من جميعكم إعلانات حقيقية وحاسمة من وجهة نظرنا، نقدم لكم هذه الإعلانات الشهرية الحقيقية كما تعلمون، على الرغم من أننا ذهبنا من خلال هذا التوقف لمدة أسبوعين أو ثلاثة الحمد لله، هدفنا هو أن نستمر لأن عملياتنا تعمل، وخدمتنا تعمل وحقاً، نضيف المزيد من الخدمات، كما سنقوم بذلك في وقت لاحق في سجل الفيديو وأخيراً، نحن م能看到 إليكم نحن هنا للكشف يمكنك أن تسألنا أسئلة إذا كان لديك أي مشاكل، أو أي شيء يمكنك أن تسألنا مباشرة تلك الأسئلة أو أي مشاكل تريد أن تقدم لنا الحمد لله، نحن جميعاً نستمع مع ذلك، سأذهب إلى الفيديو التالي و هنا عندما كان علينا إغلاق المسجد في 13 فبراير سبحان الله، كان علينا التحول بسرعة كبيرة كmanagement للنظام الأيبيك وننظر إلى أهدافنا ما يمكننا القيام به في المستقبل للتأكد من أن هناك تأثير minimal على خدماتنا وننظر إلى الخدمات المضافية التي يمكننا إضافة فوق ما نقدمه في الماضي بالإضافة إلى أن أحد الأشياء الرئيسية هي التأكد من أننا نمر هذه الأوقات الصعبة، غير مسبقة ن照顧我们的员工 هذا كان أحد أولويات وهدفنا الرئيسية along with that، نظر إلى التمويلات كما تعلمون، المسجد غير مغلق في هذه الأوقات، نريد التأكد من أننا ننظر إلى كل ميزانية ننظر إلى كل ما يأتي ونتأكد من أننا نقدم لكم إعلان حقيقي اليوم مرة أخرى، هذه هي أهدافنا الرئيسية التي نعمل عليها، ونتأكد من أننا نستمر في توفير إعلانات حول هذه الأهداف مع ذلك، سأذهب إلى الفيديو التالي و هنا سأتحدث عن ما كانت بعض الخدمات التي تمكنا من إحضارها خلال غضون يومين من إغلاق المسجد هدفنا الرئيسي، وهدفنا الرئيسي، و prioritize كان أن هناك حقاً أي فجوة في خدماتنا وفي هذا السياق، خلال، سأقول، ساعات بدأنا العمل مع مسجدنا رئيس المدرسة، شيخ حفيز أجداد، وчитاءنا و الحمد لله، خلال يومين، يومين إلى ثلاثة، تمكنا من إحضار مدرسة المدرسة لذا، هناك أقل تغييرات في مدرسةنا والآن، الحمد لله، منذ حوالي أسبوعين، لدينا 70 طالب يأخذون دروسًا عبر الإنترنت يمكنهم رؤية سيادتهم، والчитاء يمكنهم رؤيةهم مباشرة ويمكنهم أن يفتقرون دراستهم مباشرة إلى سيادةهم والتأكيد، وجميع ذلك الحمد لله، التأكيد كان ملائماً من الчитاء، ومن الآباء، ومن الطلاب و الحمد لله، حتى كان لدينا واحدًا من طلابنا الذي اخرج قبل يومين لدينا أخت محمد متين، الذي اخرج قبل يومين 願Allah يباركه 願Allah يبارك آباؤه 願Allah يبارك كبارنا Such a blessing to have such a program in our Masjid مع مدرسة المدرسة، خلال أسبوع تمكنا من إحضار مدرسة النادر ومدرسة مدرسة مساعدها الآن، لدينا حوالي 200 طالب يأخذون دروسًا عبر الإنترنت ومن يوم الاثنين إلى يوم الاثنين، نقوم بدروس live مع هذه 200 طالب الحمد لله، جميع كبارنا نتأكد من أنهم آمنين جميعنا، نجلس远程 نجلس远程 online ونعلم هذه الدروس بشكل فعال باستخدام هذه المنصات عبر الإنترنت مع ذلك، مدرسة يومي في اليوم التالي، تم إنشاءها الحمد لله، لدينا مدرسة يومي عبر الإنترنت ونحن لدينا حوالي 300 أو أكثر طالب يأخذون مدرسة يومي عبر الإنترنت وهذا سيعمل على طول الصيف مع ذلك، لدينا مدرسة الفيتيا التي在线 وأخيرًا، لكن ليس الأقل مدرسة الطبيّة الأيبيك وهي واحدة من الخدمات المهمة التي نقدمها على أساس يومي هذه在线، باستخدام تقنية التلوية الطبية و الحمد لله，在最后的三个周日 رأينا 36 مريض باستخدام تقنية التلوية الطبية عبر الإنترنت الحمد لله، هذه كانت بعض الخدمات الموجودة التي تمكنا من إحضارها خلال فترة زمنية طويلة لقد كان ذلك三天 و يمكنك أن ترى أن خدماتنا تعمل ونعمل في تلك الخطوط الزمنية الآن، مع هذه الخدمات الحالية في هذه الأوقات، كان علينا التأكد من أن مجتمعنا يبقى متصل مع المسجد ونتمكن من مساعدة أحتياجاتك spirituelle،和社会 واحتياك التعليمي وفي هذا السياق، أول برنامج بدأنا فيه كان قناة live الأيبيك الحمد لله，在这条频道，在这个live program على أساس يومي، نقدم برامج live باستخدام قناتنا YouTube و الحمد لله، لدينا حوالي 40,000 مشترك وسأذكر أننا فقط هذا الشهر فقط هذا الشهر، لدينا حوالي مليون مشاهدة على قناتنا YouTube هذا يظهر الجودة التي يجلبها الأيبيك على مجتمعنا وليس فقط على مجتمعنا، بل على العالم لدينا جمهور من حول ومن داخل برامجنا تخدم للفتيات، لشباب، لشباب ول families وكما قلت، الحمد لله، حوالي مليون مشاهدة أختي وفتياتي، هذا يتحدث عن قدرة برامجنا والجودة والكمية التي نجلبها إليكم الحمد لله، على أساس يومي وأريد أن أشكر شيوخنا، وفتياتنا، ومنظماتنا وجميع أعضاء مجلس الإدارة الذين يعملون في كل مكان لجعل الأمر يحدث في فترة زمنية طويلة من فبراير إلى مارس، مشاهدنا ترتفع حوالي 300% فقط بسبب برامجنا فقط بسبب مجتمعنا، ومجتمعات حول العالم التي تستفيد من برامجنا و هنا، إذا كان بإمكاني رؤية سجل الفيديو نعرضنا الأربعة عشر مقاطع فيديو لهذا الشهر，在最后的三天到四周 الأربعة عشر مقاطع فيديو وحبي الله، كما ترون أكثر من 100,000 مشاهدة على فيديونا الأعلى ثم،当你向下看列表 يمكنك أن ترى آلاف وآلاف المشاهد وهذا ليس نهاية الأمر يمكنك أن ترى العديد من مقاطع الفيديو، حبي الله التي تلقى آلاف مشاهدة وخصوصاً، حبي الله، فتياتنا يفعلون عمل رائع مع شيوخنا 願Allah يباركهم،願Allah يباركهم مع ذلك، سأذهب إلى الفيديو التالي و هنا، سأستمر في التحدث عن الخدمات الجديدة التي نضيفها في الأيبيك أولاً، دروس التعليمات عبر الإنترنت مرة أخرى، أريد أن أشكر أخت بلال، و팀 التعليم لقد فعلوا عمل فريد خلال فترة زمنية صغيرة خلال فترة زمنية قصيرة قدموا أربعة دروس لدينا درس كوبيرنات وهو بالفعل في التقدم أكثر من 22 طالب يأخذون هذا الدرس ثم لدينا درس التكنولوجيا الذكية وهو بالفعل في التقدم مرة أخرى، درس كامل كلا درسهما مزدوجة، مع 22 طالب الآن، التسجيل في التقدم لدرس الأموال الحقيقية وalso Tableau لدرس المبتدئين ودعني أقول أن، أختي وفتياتي أن هذه الدروس، على الرغم من أننا ندفع ميزانية قليلة هذه ترجمت وحتى فوقها، إذا لم تكن قادرة على التأكيد يمكننا أن ن给予ك ترجمة إضافية أو حتى تجعلها مجانية إذا لم تكن قادرة على التأكيد مرة أخرى，在这一天，我们想确保 الحمد لله، أننا نعمل على مجتمعنا نعمل على تطويرك профессиональ لأن هذه هي الأوقات الصعبة وأنا أعرف، وجميعنا، حبي الله أختي هنا نفهم أن في هذه الأوقات هذا ما يمكننا القيام به للمجتمع توفير盡可能多的services مع وجود هذه دروس التكنولوجيا والتعليم بدأنا عدد من برامج الخدمات الاجتماعية في التعاون مع مساعدهم，并 وظائف الفتيات على سبيل المثال، مساعدة قناتي القلب هنا، نقدم طعامًا مجانيًا إلى مبادئ أي شخص يحتاج إلى الطعام أو أي شخص لا يمكنه التأكيد على سبيل المثال، أي من السنين لا يمكنه التأكيد على الذهاب إلى المارس هنا، منظماتنا الاجتماعية، ومساعدها منظمات فتياتنا، حبي الله يقدمون طعامًا مجانيًا إلى مبادئنا هنا هو رقم 4696268650 مرة أخرى، 4696268650 ولا يقتصر على مجتمع مسلم إنها مجتمع مسلم ومجتمع غير مسلم يمكنهم أن يتصلون بنا ونقوم ونقدم الطعام الحمد لله، حتى الآن، تمكنا من إجراء أكثر من 50 توصيلات في الأسبوعينครامليين، منذ أن بدأنا برامجنا حبي الله وأريد أن أشكر أخت ياهيا، أخت سمير مساعدة الفتيات، حبي الله لقد فعلوا عمل كبير 願Allah يباركهم،願Allah يباركهم مع ذلك، الحمد لله، من اليوم التالي، في يوم سaturday بدأنا سفر عبر مطبخ الطعام وفي هذا السفر عبر مطبخ الطعام، مرة في الأسبوع يمكن لأي شخص أن يأت ويسحب فلية الطعام فلية المارس من سفر الأيبيك الحمد لله، سينشئ في الأسبوع التالي وagain، سينشئ للمسلمين وغيرهم لا أسئلة هذا هو، الحمد لله،和服务 من الأيبيك للمجتمع، للمنابض، للمسلمين والغير قناتي الطبية الأيبيك القلب مع وجود مساحة open ل taking appointments وكل هذا، باستخدام التلوية الطبية بدأنا قناتي للconsultation قناتي القلب حيث إذا كنت تواجه مشاكل في الصحة ولا تكن على ما يرام ولا يمكنك الذهاب إلى طبيب هنا يمكنك أن تتصل ويمكنك أن ت consult مع طبيب live كبارنا الطبيب،願Allah يباركهم كجزء من مدرسة الطبيّة الأيبيك وخدمتنا الاجتماعية، حبي الله لقد انتقدوا وقد خلقوا هذا القلب حيث يمكنك أن تصل ويمكنك أن ت consult مع طبيب ويمكنهم أن يرشدك дальше ما يجب عليك القيام به الحمد لله، هذا هو مساعدة أخرى التي felt was needed for our community و الحمد لله، لقد بدأنا سينشئ، الحمد لله، في يوم غد، 7 فبراير مع ذلك، الحمد لله، خلال أسبوعين بدأنا درس نادر成年人 مع إمام ناديم و هنا، أي شخص يريد أن يتعلم التجديد ويريد أن يفتقر مع إمام مع طبيب مade مع إمام ناديم يمكنك أن تأخذ هذا الدرس من 5 إلى 7، يوم الاثنين إلى يوم الاثنين و الحمد لله، سنرسل المزيد من الإعلانات و نشرات على هذا الدرس الحمد لله، هذا سيكون مساعدة جيدة يمكننا أن نبدأ في رمضان مع ذلك سأنتقل إلى الفيديو التالي و هنا سأتحدث عن عندما كان علينا أن نتخذ هذه القرار الصعب لإغلاق المسجد أولويتنا كانت لل员工 التأكد من أن员工نا ي照顧 كما تعلم أختي وفتياتي أن هذه هي الأوقات غير محددة وهذه هي الأوقات الصعبة وفي هذه الأوقات غير المحددة management الأيبيك أراد التأكد من أننا ن照顧 لل员工 وemployeesنا في هذا السياق، من وجهة نظر الأمن دали لهم القدرة على العمل من المنزل للعمل من مستوى سهولة حيث أنهم آمنين ونتأكد من أن التأثير financial هو minimal عليهم هذا هو هدفنا آخر أننا لا نترك أي من أعضاء الموظفين أعرف أن في الكثير من الحالات، قد تسمعت عن التمويل وكل هذا ولكن في نهاية اليوم عملنا هو أن ن照顧 لل员工 و成员 الحمد لله، وهذا واحد من هدفنا الرئيسي الذي ن照顧 قمنا بخطوات حيث يمكنهم أن ي貢献 إلى خدماتهم الموجودة ولكن أيضاً إلى الخدمات المضافية لذا، دعني أقول لك شيئًا أن مكالمةهم لم تقل لقد ترتفع هذا هو الوراء في послед three weeks حبي الله، المحتوى الذي قاموا به البرامج التي بدأوا في إنشاءها يتحدثون عن أنفسهم كما ترون، حبي الله، العمل شيوخنا، و员工نا، و员工اتنا وчитاءنا وجميع أعضاءنا المساعده المزدوجين هو كثير أكثر مما كانوا يفعلونه قبل ذلك الحمد لله،願Allah يباركهم مرة أخرى، هذا كان أحد أولوياتنا الأعلى مع ذلك، كان لدينا أعضاء معينين ذهبوا من بعض التحديات المالية و الحمد لله، قمنا بدعمهم من قيد السدك لذا، قمنا ب照顧 العديد من أعضاءنا من قيد السدك، الحمد لله فقط لتأكد من أنهم يمررون هذه الأوقات الصعبة ونتمكن من مساعدتهم moving on to financial management هذا موضوع مهم للغاية بالنسبة ل مجلس الإدارة ونحن نريد التأكد من أننا نشارك تأكيدًا شفيفًا و放开 وننتظركم على أسئلتهم إذا كان لديكم أي شيء حول هذا الموضوع دعني أشارك معكم قبل أن نغلق المسجد قيد السدك، قيد السدك قيد السدك قيد السدك الذي نجمعه على أساس الشهر حوالي 140,000 ونشارك هذا في اجتماع عالمي الأخير إذا كنت جزءًا من اجتماع عالمي الماضية نشارك الكثير من التفاصيل لهذه القيد بشكل أساسي، نقسم هذه القيد، 140,000 إلى قسمات مختلفة ونعرض لكم، الذين كانوا live في اجتماع عالمي distribution لهذه القيد من أين تأتي هذه الأصول المختلفة لذا، قيد السدك العام هو حوالي 140,000 وbillions monthly expenses were around 160,000 during a normal during a regular month and this is an average this is approximation right because in some part of the year for example, in Ramadan it goes up and then in certain months they come down the funds and the expenses go up and down as well but this is an average this is what we had on average throughout the year on the monthly basis so our deficit per month even during a regular month was around 20,000 give and take so now that we go into the shutdown mode and I know March is going to be a little unique month because here we had to close down the Masjid on March 13th so there is this sort of hybrid where the Masjid was open for a while and then it was closed but these what I'm going to share with you is an approximation, a projection moving forward starting in April and beyond our funds projection and our expenses projection as you can see then from a funds perspective our donation they went down about 35,000 from 45,000 so these include our recurring donations our online donations, all of these so they went down almost 10,000 and this is our projection and this is what we're seeing right now based on the last three weeks data that we have our Juma our kiosk, our box collection has gone down to zero pretty much the schools الحمد لله، منذ أن تكون المدارس تعمل نجمع حوالي 40,000 من المدارس ودعني أذكر شيئًا عن المدارس على الرغم من أننا نملك، الحمد لله نملك الكثير من الطلاب تذكر أن العديد من الطلاب هذه They are on financial aid They cannot afford on top of it there are many students who are on discount We give them a discount plus we have, in certain cases we're not collecting all the fees full screen right, as I was mentioning that in case of school so we have all these different scenarios where we're not collecting all the fees from all the students we have financial aid, we have discounts we have in certain months, we're not collecting all the fees because people sometimes as they go through these difficult times they're not able to pay and we work with them we want to make sure that at the end of the day our our primary goal is to provide the service and that is, الحمد لله we stay focused on providing services to our community along with that, we're getting around as you can see, you know eight and a half thousand dollars from our work our rental donations so overall, our donation coming in our projection is going to be around 83 to 84 thousand dollars approximately around 84 thousand dollars so this will be our projection for during the shutdown period now if you look at the expenses our biggest expense is our salaries and I'm sure that you can understand we have close to 49 employees if I count our Sunday School our part-time, our teachers our full-time, our admin staff all of these, we have close to 49 employees and they go up and down a little bit but overall around 49 employees so our salaries for the month and this is, by the way let me just say this that 願Allah reward our staff that they have taken a voluntarily pay cut in this difficult time it was a small pay cut but願Allah reward them and this is after taking that pay cut our still, we are spending our projection is about 90,000 per month our police and safety has gone down to zero we have no more police and safety I'm sorry, the safety services, right so that is zero our cleaning used to be around 10,000 now it will be around 2,000 one to two thousand dollars that is our projection because still we have a number of services that we do from certain areas, right so still around 2,000 utilities used to be around 8,000 now we're projecting around 2,000 insurance and maintenance now insurance is something that we cannot cut so our insurance is around 4,500 or almost 5,000 and then our maintenance the building maintenance and all of this we're projecting around 2,000 and that has also come down from five to six thousand dollars per month to two or three thousand dollars per month credit check we have an expense that we have to take care of and we are projecting it will be around 8,000 per month the overall expense could be around 24 to 30,000 we don't have the exact number but at this point, we're projecting that if we split it out across months, around 8,000 per month and then our other expenses could be special events, office so it's any, you know a lot like, we have subscriptions and dues and you know internet and this and that so overall, we're projecting 8,000 on the upper side so give and take, our expenses our projection during shutdown is 110,000 so as you can see that our deficit per month is going to be between 25 to 30,000 per month in this shutdown period and in a year, it accumulates so in a year, it could be 300,000 and even in a normal, in a regular period as you can see, our deficit was around 20,000 now it's around 25 to 30,000 so this is something that this deficit that we used to have we used to take care of that in Ramadan because in Ramadan, we used to reach out our community and الحمد لله you have always taken care of Aibik Masjid in the time of need so we used to take care of it in the month of Ramadan and الحمد لله we are hoping that الحمد لله you can again help us in this month and you can الحمد لله you know, as just like Aibik the way Aibik does it الحمد لله that we will have another fundraiser a virtual fundraiser in this month of Ramadan and الحمد لله we can again raise enough الحمد لله funds that can help us throughout the year so with that الحمد لله، سأذهب إلى الفيديو التالي as you can see that from the, from our government sources most probably it will be I don't think we will be able to pray Ramadan in the Masjid as you can see, there is a shelter in place order in place that goes until May 25th, I believe and even currently currently, there is really no control on pandemic and this time, even in America as you can see, the cases are going up so our, الحمد لله what, even though we hope and pray that we can pray in the Masjid then we can all come to Masjid[1598.42] and we can all come to masjid, but it seems that it will not be likely. And in this case, we have already working on, on programs that we can offer to our community. Inshallah, we already had meetings, we already planning, and our goal is, then on daily basis, we will have daily nightly halakas with Sheikh Yasser, with Hafiz Sajad. We will have programs before Aftar. We will have programs at Sahur time or before Sahur, inshallah. We will have sisters programs, we will have children's program, we will have youth programs. So again, our agenda is fall for the month of Ramadan. And we want to make sure that, alhamdulillah, all of us will have a blessed and spiritual Ramadan, inshallah, even though we're not here in the masjid, we can still take benefit from all of these programs that, inshallah, we're going to offer in the month of Ramadan. Now, what is our ask of the community? First, please be generous, donate generously. You can donate via epicmasjid.org/donate. Please go to our website. On the front page, you will see a link for donation for operations. Please go ahead and donate on that link. You can also donate via Zelle. You can go donate, you can go to your bank and just donate at epicmasjid.org. This is, we have just added this. This is one of our new ways to, for us, for you to, inshallah, to donate to masjid. And you can make it monthly. The key is, please make these donations on monthly basis, at least for next three to six months, inshallah. For Zelle, the benefit is that it's, there is no cost to Epic, there is no charge. As you, you know, for example, if you donate via website, there is a little bit of charge, but through Zelle, it's free. So inshallah, if you can do through Zelle, or even if you want to go to epicmasjid.org and donate online, that will be great as well. You can also mail a check to our address, 1350 Star Code, Plano Texas, 75074. So that is from a donation perspective. And please keep an eye open for our virtual fundraiser, inshallah, that is happening in the first week of Ramadan, inshallah. We will give you more details. I know Stad and, mashallah, our other shuq are working on it and the board is working on it. So we will give you more detail on that. Subscribe to our Epic YouTube channel, very important. If you want to get updates and notification as these programs start, please click on the subscribe button right now and turn on the notification. As we've been sending announcements that we have, brothers and sisters, we have daily programs, daily. And mashallah, there are so many people benefiting, not in this community, but around the world. We have so many people coming from UK and from Asia and other parts of the world. So inshallah, let's take advantage of our Epic live channel and, inshallah, we can all benefit from this channel. So please subscribe. You can follow us on the Facebook. And again, as I mentioned, inshallah, we're going to have our Epic fundraiser, our virtual fundraiser, inshallah, in the month of Ramadan and most probably towards the end of April, inshallah. So with that, moving on to the next. So here, I just want to highlight again, as I do, inshallah, in every round hall, that these are, mashallah, the brothers who are working with me hand in hand and providing all of these services. I know they are, they are the faces. Brother Abu Bilal for education and IT, brother Asher for youth, brother Basir Sehda for facilities, construction and children, brother Yahya for social services, schools, Epic Medical Clinic, Riyad Chowdhury is a treasurer, mashallah, and along with that, he's taking care of sports. Brother Samir Siddiqui, our vice president, he takes care of outreach, sisters and seniors committees. And then, you know, I take care of endowment. But really, at the end, there are many, many volunteers who are working behind the scene. I can assure you that currently, there are at least 50 volunteers or more who are still working behind the scene, whether it's IT or social services or outreach or sisters or, so I can go down the list, children, youth, right? So this is really, mashallah, a team effort. And I want to thank each and every one of them, mashallah, may Allah reward you. You're working very hard, may Allah bless you for services to this community. And then finally, inshallah, now we go to the Q and A section. And again, my apology if I took a little bit of longer time. We have, inshallah, another 20 minutes, we can take Q and A. And with that, inshallah, I'm going to request brother Asher, you know, if there are any questions who have come up in the last 20 minutes. Go, Asher, bye.
There's just a few questions, not that many. First question from brother Sayyid Fahad is, what are the virtual Ramadan programs Epic will put together during the Ramadan? Want to say something?
Yeah. So as I shared a slide here, inshallah, we're going to have a daily halaka with Sheikh Yasser and Hafiz Sajad. Inshallah, it will start around 10 o'clock and it will go for an hour. Inshallah, we're planning on having pre-Aftar program with Ustad Bajoor, maybe 20 to 30 minutes, inshallah. A Sahur program with Imam Nadeem, our sisters programs. Alhamdulillah, you can already see that we have a number of programs. So inshallah, we're going to bring those programs. We are still working the details, but inshallah, we will share with you as we finalize our details. Children's and youth program, here, brother Murad and sister Sophia, they're already working on a number of programs. We already had our planning meeting last week and, inshallah, we will give you more details in coming days. Again, my request is that subscribe to our newsletter, Epic newsletter. If you're not subscribed already, subscribe to our Epic YouTube channel because that's where you're going to get a lot of these updates from Epic Board and also from our scholars and speakers. So do subscribe, that is very important because that's how you get to know what's happening in the community. So inshallah, we will give you more updates soon.
So brother, a second question from brother Moushtaq Hassan. He's saying, if the things don't get back to normal by summer, do we have an intention of doing a summer school for new students?
Zakallah, that's a very good question, brother. And for that, I'm going to, inshallah, pass the ball to our schools liaison, brother Yahya. And he can, maybe, inshallah, he can fill us in with some details on the summer school and what is our plan, maybe continue Sunday school or what is the plan? Yahya, if you can, inshallah, let brother know.
Zakallah, question, inshallah, since we're now virtual, the plan is that we're going to keep most programs alive, going into summer too, inshallah. And also the programs that we used to have that were called summer programs, inshallah, we're going to work and find ways to even try to do those programs. Like brother Imran said, that we're trying to continuously provide the community, all the programs that they used to, they used to benefit from when the masjid was open. So the goal is to, is to keep all the programs alive as if the masjid is open, inshallah.
Zakallah.
So brother, there's another question. It's actually about, asking about, you know, if we, by the E time, if we still have to stay at home, will we be allowed to pray E at home? That may be a question that we may have to refer to.
Yeah, this is a question that, inshallah, we'll have to refer to our scholars and, inshallah, you know, they will get back to you on that question. So this is something, inshallah, they will discuss.
Sister Mahamuda Hussain, put a question, asking what plan do you have to cover the deficit?
So again, as we went through this situation, right? Our key was that, number one, we bring up all of our existing services. As you know, our existing services, they are a source of revenue for Epic. So that was our number one priority, that we bring up our services as soon as possible. And that has helped us a lot during the past three weeks. Along with that, alhamdulillah, our, our social media is growing. And, inshallah, this month probably will, inshallah, collect around $1,500 to $2,000, give and take, inshallah, that is another area that we're focusing right now. But really, our, our biggest source of funding is your help and your donations. So really, our request is that help us, go to our website, do Zelle, and help us with your donations. Along with that, inshallah, as I mentioned, that we're going to have a fundraiser at the, you know, inshallah, in Ramadan. So we're already planning on it, inshallah, it will be a virtual fundraiser. So that's where our goal would be, that we can, inshallah, raise enough funds that can help us not only during this shutdown, but also, inshallah, throughout the year. So, inshallah, stay tuned, inshallah, for more information, more news. But right now, that is our plan, that along with all these different services, we can have a fundraiser and, inshallah, see if we can raise funds through the fundraiser.
Brother Mohsin is asking if we have any plans for any online or virtual exercises or, you know.
So let me, inshallah, pass the ball to Basir Bhai and see, Basir Bhai, if there is something you think we can do? Virtual exercise.
Virtual exercise. Well, I don't have a plan. For virtual exercise, we can always have a program, but we could do any many programs online and we can look into virtual programs and have one of the instructors either record it or do it on Skype, or we can have multiple people come on Skype and do that. So there's the possibility to do these type of programs, we just need to figure out what the right way to do it is, what would be the flow of the program. But yes, we could have some exercise programs, put a camera in the gym or something. Yeah, if there's anyone in the community that can help us to do this, we can set up a time and do this program, inshallah.
Zakallah, Basir Bhai.
So another question from sister Mahamuda Hussain, does Epic have any emergency fund?
So I'm going to pass that to, inshallah, Riyad Bhai. Riyad Bhai, if you can, inshallah, address sister's question. Riyad Bhai, go ahead. Alaykum salam.
Okay. Salaam alaykum. Is it better, Basir Bhai? So, alhamdulillah, we couldn't build this virus and this issue came so quickly in such a short time, we could not build on it. But alhamdulillah, we started rainy day fund, whatever, the Hajj and Umrah and little bit income that we had, and we were able to set aside and build that rainy day fund for three months. There is why we need help for month of Ramadan and we need to build that fund and bring it to a six month or maybe a year, you know, that we can sustain with it. So right now, we have three months of rainy day fund that we can, emergency fund we can use.
Zakallah, I hope that answers the question, sister. So as brother Riyad said, we have maybe two to three months rainy fund. But beyond that, we will need support from our community. Asher Bhai, any more questions?
Yeah, there's one question in regards to youth programs, like youth boys programs, specifically in Ramadan. They're saying there are not that many programs for youth boys as of now, so I would like to request to develop more interactive sessions for youth especially.
Zakallah, that's a very good point. And for that, I think, Asher Bhai, I'm going to point that back to you. You are the youth liaison, so if you can maybe address that with, see what could we do?
Sure. So, inshallah, we are, that's a very good question. I am working currently right now with brother Murad and sister Sophia. They are, they are already doing some programs. Some of them are interactive, they're doing some Google Hangout sessions and whatnot. However, after every program, we do collect our feedback and we look at, you know, the feedback from the viewers and, inshallah. So we are going to have a meeting on this very quickly for Ramadan programs and I will surely bring this up with our youth director and our youth mentor.
Zakallah. Thank you, brother Asher. Any other questions? Go ahead. Okay, go ahead, you can, we can ask a question.
The question was on, you know, how are we going to plan to cover our deficit? And actually, to let you know, during the month of Ramadan, and also we do one in fall, and also stream the ministry for the fundraiser helps us to go through the deficit. So especially the Ramadan fundraiser helps us to go through that extra fund that we need.
Zakallah, go, thank you, brother. Asher Bhai, any, any more questions? So as Asher Bhai is looking at the question, I'm going to just mention that this is really vitamin C, right, Samir Bhai? You did not give me something different, right? Okay, this is vitamin C.
So a question for the children from ages six to 12. Okay, that's a question.
So there's a question here for the, what's the plan for continuous programs for ages six to 12? Do you want to take this, brother Basir?
Salaam alaykum, yes, we do already have a program for children's already, brother Murad is already doing one. It's every day, Monday to Thursday at 5:00 PM. It's called Children's Storytime. We have, it's very interactive, he makes, he had to children, make drawings and videos that he sends back and he plays them the next day or end of the week. So you can go onto our YouTube channel and we have a playlist for Children's Storytime and you can check it out there, inshallah.
Jazakallah, brother Basir.
Any other question?
Yes, there's another question, sister Mahamuda Hussain. She's asking, is there any way we can cut down our expenses more until the situation gets back to normal?
So, sisters, that's a good question. And cutting down operations, we can always look at that, but that should be the option of last resort because we have, I can assure you that we have looked at every single expense. Wherever we could cut, we have cut down. And as I mentioned, that even our staff have taken a voluntarily pay cut on top of all of this. So again, as a board, as I was saying, you know, we also need to take care of our staff. And, and there is, at a certain level, inshallah, we want to make sure that we don't go too deep cutting on the operations where it starts hurting our people, our employees. And in certain cases, we may not be able to cut it because, remember that we're bringing so many services to Epic community. If you see, on daily basis, all of these live programs, all of these online programs, all of these schools, all of these things which are happening, and no other masjid you can see around the DFW that I know, even in the nation that is bringing so many programs to their community and the communities around in the world. Alhamdulillah, as I mentioned, that we had closed almost million views just this month of March. And that shows, right, that, alhamdulillah, people are watching what we're presenting. So all of this, it takes effort. And our, currently, our, as you saw that, we have $90,000 expense on the salaries. And we cannot further cut unless we cut salaries. And then we will have to cut services. So, so that's the dilemma that we have. But at the end of the day, I'm personally, I know, I want to make sure that we do not cut deep. We will take care of our Epic employees and Epic staff. And, inshallah, that is something that is our goal and objective, inshallah. And I know that Epic will help us, Epic community, we are, we are a community, we are a family, and we always come together when family needs each other. So that's, inshallah, what I will mention.
So, Jazakallah, man, boy, there's another question. I cannot tell the name, but it says, can Epic avail any of the new government financial assistance?
Oh, Zakallah, that's a very good question. I forgot to mention that, that we have already applied for it. We have already applied for the loan that later on you can convert into grant. And I'm going to have brother Riyad Chowdhury, who's our treasurer, give a quick update on that.
Salaam alaykum. So, alhamdulillah, this loan is not open yet, but it will be open tomorrow. And it is not exactly a loan, rather grant, certain amount will be forgiven. So, inshallah, we'll apply for the max and the forgiven amount is what we, you know, are looking into it. The rest of it, you know, will, inshallah, give back. But we are applying, we are in the process, it is a new, a lot of form need to be filled up. And alhamdulillah, we are very close to submit it tomorrow and, you know, make dua that, you know, it benefits our community, inshallah.
Any other questions?
This is not a question, man, boy, more of a suggestion from a brother Azar Sumroh, suggesting that we put up like a deficit meter and update the community as people make contribution.
No, that's a very good question. Yeah, that's a very good suggestion and, inshallah, very good idea, we should do that, inshallah. We can look into that, Riyad Bhai. That's a good point, yeah. So, Asher Bhai, we can close in 10 minutes, if that's okay, inshallah. If there are any other further questions, we can take those and close in 10 minutes.
Slowly coming in.
Okay. So in the meantime, let me, inshallah, since I'm, I'm going to give the mic also to Bilal Bhai. So just give us a quick rundown on the educational program. Mashallah, we have done a tremendous job on the IT side, on the education side. We have brought these four programs, mashallah, very valuable, helping the community. So just give us a couple of minutes, inshallah, you know, a quick update and what is your vision from an IT and education perspective?
Yes, salaam alaykum. I pray and hope for safety for everyone from this virus. So we, quickly, we had to, alhamdulillah, obviously tremendous thanks and Jazakallah Khair and to all the volunteers. But especially, I work very closely with IT committee and education. And I see these brothers, volunteers, they're working tirelessly. It's really not easy to, right now, we are, the committee is managing four classes same time. So it goes a lot of coordination with finding the quality instructors and then enrollment and then marketing. And then the, you know, so it's really a lot of logistics, kind of behind the scenes. And it's going smoothly, two classes, IT professional training classes, Kubernetes and artificial intelligence are running. This is week two. The two are currently open and it probably, I have a printout of both. One is the real estate investing is currently open for registration and another one is tablo for beginners. So I encourage, both of them are posted on the website. Those, whoever is interested, I encourage to visit our website and look up, look up the curriculum and please sign up. Both of them are going to be offered in the weekend of the 18th and 19th. Tablo is from IT committee and real estate investing is from education committee. So the vision is, alhamdulillah, we are going to offer Epic IT committee and education, going to offer kind of continuous stream of professional training classes. These classes is helps the human development, enriches the community at the same time. They are really, they're good source of revenue for the masjid. Inshallah, our goal and the target is, pretty much, is to have at least one class kind of happening. While the one is happening, inshallah, the team will look into the, another one in the pipeline so that the one will be running, another one will be kind of like in planning. So that's how the vision is, is kind of continuous, offering professional training classes.
Zakallah, Zakallah, very good. Thank you for the update. Asher Bhai, any other question? Asher Bhai, any other question?
Yeah, actually, can I build up for Brother Bilal Bhai? There's a question there for you, it says, is your IT team willing to help other masjid? Mashallah.
No, I mean, they are, like I said, they're extremely busy right now, but there is always room for collaboration. We always learn from each other. So yeah, definitely, if anyone wants to have some level of collaboration, please reach out to us. And I'm going, I forgot to mention before, we are always looking for quality instructors as well. So if you know somebody who can run a good IT class or any type of non-technical class under education, please do let us know.
Jazakallah Khair, Brother Bilal. Okay, so there's a question and I think Brother Riyad can take it, Imam.
What is the question?
The question is, can the financial application be filled by anyone or does it require the accountant to fill the application?
No, it does not require an accountant. It can be filled by any needy person. And we do have a process where an application goes through a financial aid team, where the financial aid team filters, they interview the person and make sure that the person is deserving and then based on that, they recommend the financial aid that should be given to that person. And then it comes to our team, our treasurer, Brother Riyad. Brother Yahya is also here from social services perspective. So that is part of our financial aid team process, where you go online, you apply and then insha Allah, it goes through a process. Currently, I can let you know that at this point, we have a very small budget at this point because we went through this situation. So our balances are very low, our account balances are very low on sadaka and zakat at this point. So please, if, please help, first, please help out, go to our website and donate on sadaka and zakat, insha Allah, so we can build that account and we can help more people. Because right now, we are, we have restricted that to very limited and making sure that, you know, we don't go above our budget. So insha Allah, can we take the last two questions and then insha Allah, we can close?
So previous Amir Javedi that text me a question, are you guys keeping a seven foot distance? So Jazab Bhai, we didn't measure it exactly, but we tried our best, just to let you know, salaam.
Asher Bhai, any other last question? Okay, there's a question?
There's, there's one, it's just small.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was a question about if there was, if there was a WhatsApp group, kind of community wide group in addition to email address. So we do have the community level WhatsApp where all the, you know, collaborations happen, but we, and there are obviously other WhatsApp groups. But Epic does not have any kind of community wide WhatsApp group that Epic actually created or kind of maintains. But like I said, there are different community level groups do exist.
So insha, Asher Bhai, is there any other question or...
No, I think we're done.
Okay. So Jazakallah, my dear community members and again, thank you for joining. Please remember us in your Duas, few things to remember. Number one, please stay safe. Number two, help Epic as much as you can in your capacity. You know, of course, all of us are going through difficult situation. So whatever you can do, insha Allah, it's up to you, make it recurring and insha Allah, we will have more information. But even more than financials, if you can help us even from a volunteer perspective. Right now, we need help in social services where you can go and drop the, you know, the food box at somebody's doorstep. We need people there. We need people in IT, we need people in outreach, we need people in different Mashallah because still their operations are going on. And so help as much as you can, insha Allah, and we are here, you can always reach out to us, you can always send us an email, you can go to our website and you can send us an email or you can reach out to any of us because you're our community members and at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to serve you. So again, thank you, remember, sorry, in Duas, I want to thank my dear board members who are sitting right next to me, seven feet apart, of course, Basir Bhai, Brother Asher, Riyad Bhai, Bilal Bhai, Yahya Bhai and my dear brother Samir. Mashallah, it's a blessing to have these brothers as part of the team and may Allah bless you brothers, Jazakallah Khair. Thank you for all of your support. Salaam alaikum, alhamdulillah.